Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020 at 7 o'clock. In anticipation of the extension of executive order 2020-17, the Nottingham Planning Board, excuse me, will be holding a virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting throughout this platform or through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in the meeting. Before we start the agenda, I just would like to do a roll call indicating the board members that are here, at least that I can see, and I'll just call everybody just in case somebody's on a line. So Ed Veale.
President.
Gary Anderson.
Here.
Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Susan Mooney.
Here.
Tyler Eaton.
Here.
Robert Davies.
President.
Leanne Gast. Okay, Leanne is absent. And I'd like to, the vacancy we have, which Joe Cluff resigned a meeting or two ago, I'd like to see Mr. Davies in that spot.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, so I thank everybody for coming to this meeting. We have a meeting with, we're calling it the Joint Land Use Boards. We're going to take about a half an hour to discuss some of the things with zoning relative to zoning ordinances. This is the time of year which the planning board has the opportunity to put forth changes, any changes to the zoning language that seems to be necessary based on either some conflicts in the past or just some clarification or also some, adding some things that have developed over the course of the year. And that may include some master planning or some other events that have led to, you know, some discussions. So this meeting right now is for kind of the land use boards, that being the planning board, the zoning board, and town select board, if, I know we do have representative and then town staff to go over some of, well, so that we, the planning board, can inform you, but also discuss current zoning issues that are occurring, what you're seeing. And then we'll go over some of the proposed changes that the planning board is looking to do. Before I do that, I'd like to just recognize if anybody's from the zoning board, if you could just state your name.
Me. I'm Bonnie.
Hi Bonnie.
I'm a member of the zoning board of adjustment, and I'm actually the sitting chairman. I'm surprised there's no other members of the zoning board here. Joanna, am I it?
Raylene is here.
Oh, good. Hi, Raylene. So Raylene also is on the zoning board, and I didn't see her name before.
Okay, great.
So there are two of us present.
And anybody from the Conservation Commission? I know Susan Mooney is the representative on the planning board.
I am. I'm Deb Kimball.
Great, thanks Deb.
And I'm Raylene Shiffey Rice, and I'm an alternate.
Cheryl Smith is here, too.
Yep, and Cheryl Smith on the Conservation Commission.
Great, hi Cheryl.
Hello.
And let me just check about select board members.
Tyler.
Tyler, you're the man. Any other, well, any other boards before we move to staff, is there any other board members here that I haven't recognized?
Yes, we have Dale Sylvia is here and Chief Bill Chuck is here.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask next is just, there's some public, so. Great, thanks Dale, and.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. And thanks Jay. All right, so I think maybe the, I was going to ask about informed, some information from everybody because I do want to have somewhat of a open conversation, but we just need to try and organize it so that people can either raise their hand or try and have some open dialogue. Before we do that, Steph, I wanted to just turn to you to see if there were some precursors to what we go through right now. Well, just anything that that we may not touch on, I think what we'd probably do is just, let's just go to the primary things that we're thinking of, of looking at. So just to explain to the rest of the board members for zoning purposes, we are looking at amendments, including a wetlands amendment and a what's the list? Sorry about that, I've got a messy desktop on my computer.
You want me to jump in?
I got it. So we do have three priorities this year, and that is the wetlands ordinance conditional use permit. We currently have a zoning ordinance that requires for any dredging or filling to obtain a variance from the zoning board. So any wetland filling, dredging and filling not only has to get a state permit, but does have to apply for a zoning board approvals. We are have talked about this and we've have one sort of drafted that we would have the wetlands ordinance of conditional use permit that the planning board could provide. And then a second one is the stream protection ordinance. And this is something that we've received some good draft language from the Conservation Commission. And then also, one of the priorities this year is looking at the building heights or the grade amendment relative to the maximum heights of buildings. And this is something that's come across from staff, from town staff about, you know, safety, fire safety specifically. In our building code, we have specific heights, but the grade or the lower part of how that is determined is a little vague, and we want to just tighten up that language. Steph, did I miss anything on that?
Nope, I think those are our three priorities. I think it is worth mentioning that we looked into the flood hazard area and updating that. And FEMA did get back to us and say that there are no updates to the flood hazard area in Nottingham, so we won't be updating that.
Okay, take that one off the list. There are some other ones that had, we had considered, but we held off on them just because we know the public's appetite for a lot of amendments or a lot of changes usually isn't that well-received or understood. So the priority of this wetland ordinance and stream protection ordinance would couple those two together, being two separate amendments, but would have it in the same similar characteristic, put it that way. Anyone from the planning board that wants to elaborate on these three at this point? Yeah, just, just speak up.
Derek, I guess the only thing I would say relative to the conditional use permit for the wetlands is that part of the reason we want to do that is that many of the surrounding towns, and that's a common practice for, or found within many zoning ordinances, even within this district, so that's partially the reason.
Yeah. Thanks Ian. And Susan, could you just speak a little bit to the stream protection ordinance and its purpose briefly?
Yes, I can do that. This was something that was a suggestion in the master plan that it would be a topic that Nottingham should look, look to, to protect the smaller streams in town that aren't protected by state ordinance. And so a year or so ago, maybe two years ago, we looked to the surrounding towns to see what they had for different sized streams called order and looked to see what would be appropriate for Nottingham. We didn't want something that was going to be so aggressive that was unreasonable for our community. So what we've put together is sort of a stepped buffer for different kinds of streams. First and second order streams would have a 50-foot no disturb buffer and 75 feet for all third and fourth order streams.
Great, thank you.
Sue, this is Cheryl. Can you correct me if I'm wrong, but, but this was really something that came out of the planning board with assistance from the Conservation Commission. It didn't really originate out of the Conservation Commission, it originated out of the master plan committee, which, which is a sub-board of the planning board.
Yeah, that's correct Cheryl.
Okay, I just, you know.
Yeah, it was a charge.
Yep. People might be listening in, they might not know that, you know, that this does not come from the Conservation Commission, that it was a the subcommittee with the master plan, looking at master plan, and then the planning board asking, you know, for, to develop this and working with the planning board to develop it, that it wasn't originated out of the Conservation Commission.
Correct, yeah. We did the legwork under the supervision of the planning board, yes.
Thanks Cheryl for that clarification. I might have indicated that it originated out of Conservation Commission, just because I had that hat on, Sue. So.
That's all right.
This is Mr. Veale. So Sue, one of the possible edits that was, were made on this. So initially, this was just the first through fourth order streams. Is there a reason that and greater was left off, they protected somewhere else that we wouldn't need to put them in here?
I didn't understand what you said.
I'm sorry. So on the original draft, it was just the first through fourth order streams?
No, no, first. No, first, second, third, and fourth are all mentioned.
Yeah, first through fourth, sorry. First, second, third, fourth.
Yeah.
Is there a reason, we didn't go and greater?
I don't think.
Is it because we don't have any time? Right.
No, I think fourth is as high as you go.
Maybe there's different criteria.
Right, if you look at the definitions, it tells you what a first order stream is and what a second order stream is. And, and the highest you can go is a fourth order.
Right, but I think Ed's question was also asking about whether or not those fourth order streams were also protected under other means and in, in some cases under protected rivers, they are. So fourth order streams are protected through other.
By the state.
Right, through the state regs.
Yes.
And the language in our draft here is fourth order streams and higher.
But it does say greater.
Now, that was added, that was my question. So, you know, streams do go up to apparently 12th order, which is the Amazon, so I don't think we have any 12th order streams in town. But, you know, it was a I would think a safer caveat would be to go with this language that says and greater, so that we just copy it. Unless there's a reason to not do so.
I don't think we even need it.
The language is in there, it says fourth order and higher.
Okay, let's, I just want to make sure everybody gets a chance here.
I just, this is Raylene, just in response to Ed's comment. I'm wondering, is there anything that would need to go in a higher order stream beyond four that would not have to be done to four? In other words, do bigger streams require more protection in some way that may not be relevant for the lower order streams? I don't know if that was what Ed was asking, but it prompted me to ask that, because it says fourth and higher, but does the Amazon require more protections than North River?
And I don't want to bog down the conversation, I think that's something we can come back to, but, with some input. But that was just one question I had on it.
Do we know what the highest order of stream is in Nottingham?
Four.
Okay.
That would be the North River.
So we don't have anything higher?
No, and we have several fourth order streams such as the Elliott River. I think they're listed right here. The Bean River, I think, the Elliott River, which comes out of Pataqueway Lake, the Pataqueway River, which comes out of Pataqueway Lake, Pataqueway Pond, whatever. Those are fourth order because they come from a main water body. But nothing higher than four in Nottingham. Maybe Steph can help us with.
Okay, we'll take the rest of that offline. I'd like to just hear about new issues or issues that other boards are seeing, and let me go to the zoning board. Are there things that you're seeing currently that have issues that some clarity in our zoning regulation might help?
You mean it have nothing to do with these three?
Yes.
Criteria?
Yep.
You're opening it wide open.
Well, yeah, for, for discussion purposes, because, I mean, we do want to try and make sure that we are capturing the right priority of things that, that we would move forward for any changes. And as usual, and almost always, is that there's always some cleanup that could be done in ordering and such, but yeah, if there are some issues that the zoning board is seeing more and more of, or always a conflict of, yeah, it would be helpful to know about those.
Most of our cases involve setbacks for private road frontage. That's most of our cases. Joanna, am I right on that? Joanna?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so I did have a question, a couple of questions relative to these three new things that you're talking about, if I can address those first.
Yeah.
The first one is, how does one get a dredge and fill permit now? You're adding that one has to get a variance, if I understand it correctly, yes?
No, well, one gets a dredge and fill permit from the state. The state requires a dredge and fill permit for any time wetlands are being impacted. And our zoning has a requirement that any of the dredge and fill that occurs within the wetlands overlay protection that requires ZBA variance. So that's currently in our regulation. And that's a little bit problematic in that, you know, it sends a, an applicant who has maybe even just a minor wetland impact to the zoning board to obtain a variance, which is, you know, potentially, you know, well, it is, it's legal defining piece of it, and if, if it's minor and the state is regulating it, we've always kind of gone with the state. But we do have that piece in our zoning, which we would like to amend, to make it easier for applicants to go through our system.
So that would make it easier for them.
And if I might jump in, so that we, this came up as a, from a recent case application where rereading the language, the plain language of it, is that, you know, there's a few permitted items that, that allow it, and the rest basically all is unpermitted changing of the terrain or whatnot. This is Mr. Veale, sorry. So this is an area of the law that towns can be more strict than the state standard, so they or, or, but no, we can't be less strict, so. At minimum, it's going to require a dredge and fill permit to the state anyway, but we can make, make it more strict, and it seems like our current zone actually was more strict.
And does the planning board think that there is, that it should not be more strict, or are they just asking about it? I'm a little unclear what the.
What the goal is.
Yes.
You too, Raylene.
So what we have is making, instead of a zoning variance requiring an applicant to go to the zoning board is a it is a special exception, a conditional use, sorry, a conditional use that the planning board could then grant.
So you would be removing the requirement for a special exception or variance?
Correct.
In dealing with it in your board?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
This is Cheryl, so I have a question though, so what is, what is the conditional use permit? So basically, you're, how do you decide whether or not they get a conditional use permit? Or does everybody get a conditional use permit, and what is that condition based on?
Now, we do have draft language of what the conditional use would be. And, you know, it's, you certainly can share that, but it would be a conditional use permit that's granted by the planning board. And that's primarily for the construction of roads and other access and you know, where typically driveways might cross wetlands and, and such like that. Now, there is, you know, criteria that we do look at. You know, whether it's minimizing impacts, if there's some mitigation, if it's stormwater, if it's, you know, some other setbacks providing additional setbacks to the wetlands, so there are conditions within that conditional use permit.
And who sets those conditions?
That's what, that's what the planning board has done through this draft ordinance.
So they're spelled out in the ordinance, I mean, in the, in the amendment?
Yeah, and that's the, that's what we're trying to move forward, is that that be changed in the zoning ordinance. The allowing of a conditional use permit.
So the current draft allows the conditional use in only non-critical wetlands. A conditional use permit is not valid for critical wetlands, and then it has six criteria, and it has to meet all six to be granted approval. And if it didn't meet those six, then it would go, then it would go back to the zoning for variance.
This is Cheryl. Thank you for that clarification, because I am looking through what, what that conditional use definition is and what the procedure is for getting that, so, so thank you.
I guess we're kind of good with that topic. The other question I had was, could somebody, Sue, or somebody just give a brief definition of what a first and second order stream is and what a third and fourth order is, like, what's the lamprey?
The first order stream, this is Susan, is a smaller stream that has a year-round flow with no tributary. Second order is formed when two first order streams flow into each other. And now it becomes a second order. A third order is when you have two second order streams flow into each other. So it's not additive. And a fourth order stream and higher, and I just looked in the Hampshire Planning and Zoning Book under the Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act on my old book, page 276, and twice they say fourth order or higher. So that's where and higher comes the language. But a fourth order stream and higher is formed when two third order streams flow into each other. So that would be the North River somewhere around the big road when it comes out onto 152. That's where the North River becomes the fourth order, and it's protected by the state and is, and is acknowledged as part of the Lamprey River Protected Watershed.
Yep, so this is Cheryl, so the North River, it's, it's actually a little bit north of, I believe, north of our budding property on the North River that actually becomes a fourth order stream because there is a smaller stream that comes in. That's just an example.
Thank you. Appreciate it, I didn't, I didn't know what those terms refer to. So.
This is Mr. Veale.
For those streams, right? There were no setbacks previously? Is that what?
There are no buffers. There are setbacks for buildings, but there's no vegetative buffer protection for, for runoff, say, for fertilizers or chemicals or whatever insults that might go into the water. It's just building setbacks that we have now in the regs. Nothing to, nothing to maintain the natural vegetative buffer that protects these streams from insults.
Okay, so I understand that better now, and let me just say, jumping back to question one about the dredge and fill change. I've been on the zoning board, I don't even know how long, at least 10 years, maybe 12 or 14. And I don't remember anybody ever coming to us for dredge and fill variants.
Yep, that's one of the things that we've been, we've been noticing. And so this language is recently been looked at by the towns council, and it has been designated as, you know, a clear definition that we need to enforce.
So how come we've never had anybody come before the board? Is it?
Yeah, it's, it's, the language is a little vague. Yeah, it's, it's, the language is a little vague, but I think it's, you know, if you take it now that we've kind of dissected it with the towns council, it's pretty clear, once you kind of boil it down, it just had never been, you know, required or moved forward in that direction. For whatever reason. We do have, as Ed mentioned, we do have a case that came before us recently. And that is, the outcome of that case, we'll have to obtain a variance from the zoning board. And moving forward, we do have to, anytime there is a, a wetland dredge and fill, we'll have to send that to the zoning board for a variance. So although you have never, not seen one in 10 years, you will now see a lot. And that's something also that concerns us, is that we don't want to inundate the zoning board with, you know, the, the same issue over and over and over again.
If this is requiring, I'm sorry, I'm a little confused. There hasn't been any cases that have been brought forward because the language hasn't been clear enough to require these cases to come forward. You have now revised some language for the planning board so that those situations where there may, should have been required or may have been, or variance required will now be required, but it will now be done by the planning board rather than the zoning board. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. So the planning board historically has relied on that the state issues a dredge and fill permit. So that, you know, all of the technical items that are involved with dredge and fill permits, square footages of impact, mitigations, the majority of those things that are covered by the state and are regulated by the state. We have just required the applicants to obtain that permit. There is a second step, which Ed mentioned, that is a little bit more restrictive, that the town has to also obtain a zoning variance. So this language of changing is intending that instead of having a zoning variance, that a conditional use permit would be allowed by, or reviewed by the planning board and issued under those six criteria, six conditions. And if they're not meeting those, then, then it goes to the zoning board. We're, I guess, in a sense, adding a intermediate step that might alleviate, say, 80 to 90% of those applications that the planning board can review relative to how much the impacts are. Because some of these are, are for driveways. So if a driveway crosses a wetland, then it gets kicked into requiring a zoning amendment. I mean, a zoning variance. And that's pretty restrictive to do that. And I know that that's what, you know, our current bylaws say. But then that stops that permitting process with the planning board and requires that to, requires it to, you know, be heard by the zoning board.
So the criteria themselves are not changing, it's just who makes the decision? And, but the conditional permit is different than the variance. So, but the criteria under which those decisions are made have not changed?
I'd have to turn to Ian or Ed. Ian was the one who kind of wrote up those conditions. So there are some additional conditions.
Yeah, I guess my question, are you referring to, as in, they need to prove the same? The conditions are the same for the conditional use as for a variance? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I, I was asking because none of these cases have come forward. Bonnie asked, why have none come forward? And so I'm wondering if the town is setting, the town can set stricter standards. Is what is being proposed stricter standards than what have been the standards prior to tonight?
Right, so I think Dirk touched upon a little bit, you know, the history. And there's actually, so within the wetland protection district, the overlay district, that's where the language kind of came up on this most recent case that we read, we reread that. And that's when it came to our attention, that it actually reads that there is no dredge or fill allowed without, without a variance. But there is some places in the town's regulations that make mention of wetland filling that require a state permit. So I don't know if in the past that, that goes along with the standard is that generally you have to obtain a state wetland permit for an impact. In our case, in general practice, I think it's more, it's more common to obtain a state permit and then either receive a waiver, a conditional use, or a special exception. A special exception would keep the decision-making within the zoning board's purview. Part of the reason we chose conditional use is that we figure, when we review these projects, whether it's a road or driveway on a site plan or subdivision plan, we're reviewing that impact anyway and providing comment along with the applicant submitting a state wetland permit. So part of the idea with the conditional use permit and why we chose that route is that now that conditional use permit is being reviewed concurrently with the site plan or subdivision application. And that there wouldn't be a need to go to the zoning board and possibly have a disconnect there between reviews because we often have peer reviews that would touch upon that as well. So that's part of the reason we chose the conditional use route. The six conditions per se, to be able to grant the conditional use, we've taken that from some surrounding towns. A lot of that, it's, it's pretty standard. It's, it's similar to a variance. You know, you can't have economic hardship isn't a sole reason. So hopefully that answered, or is there something more specific you had a question about?
Okay, but that the provisions for protecting the wetlands have not been decreased or increased?
Correct, right. There's been no change to that, we're just providing a different avenue.
Right, so it's really the process that's changed, not what determines.
Correct. We decided conditions to obtaining the permit itself, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
But, but isn't it also true that, given the fact that I may not have the best memory brain in the world, but I don't remember ever being asked for one of these, that it's not being used? Current ordinance is not being used for some reason, either the planning process or the permitting process. So it seems to me that you are, you are taking, you are taking a bigger look at these things.
Right, that's.
As opposed to leaving them to the building inspector or whoever gives out permits.
Mr. Beal, so this came up, so we're starting, we're seeing a lot more applications, you know, with, like at any town, you tend to see your prime areas to develop, develop first, then you start seeing your moderate and subprime areas develop. Those areas tend to have more challenging site conditions, deep slopes, wetlands, things like that. So it was during a review, a thorough review of an application where there was a lot of question from abutters about wetlands and concern about wetlands that reading the plain language of our current ordinance, it, it stood out to me that we've been applying it. And it seemed to me that we were applying incorrectly, that our ordinance now, as it reads, indicates that a variance would be needed. There's a section M in the zoning ordinance, much further in, Article four versus Article three, that mentions a wetland dredge and fill permit from the state. But the two sections don't reference each other back and forth. So, but the way we've been interpreting it was that, that if they want to dredge and fill, they just had to go to the state for a permit. But if you read our, the plain language of our zoning ordinance, it doesn't, it doesn't say that. It says that it shall not occur.
Yeah, so that's primarily why we're trying to, you know, make a better process out of this, not, not increase or decrease any of the restrictions.
Can I also ask for some clarification on the legal ramifications of a conditional use as opposed to a variance? You know, does it run with the land forever? Or, you know, I have no experience with that term.
And we, yeah, and maybe we can get into this a little bit more detailed off of, offline of this meeting because we've got a lot of things that we do want to make sure that we, we cover. But yeah, we can, Bonnie, we can get back to you on, on that question and the answer, if, if we could. Because there are some others here that I want to make sure we, we hear from.
Because if you say no to people and then we get them, it would be really helpful for us to understand why you said no and what the difference between conditional use and a variance is.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I could see Steph drawing some stuff down, so maybe Steph can help us with that clarification.
Yeah. Let me be conscious of, of everybody's time. I know we had kind of slated about a half an hour, which we're just a little over. But I do want to make sure that we cover everything here. Chief Philchuck, I know if you're still on the line, I appreciate your waiting. I do want to hear from yourself on one of the concerns that Building Inspector Dale, I think, who is also on, brought up. And that's clarifying the, the way that building heights are measured. Is that correct?
That is correct. I, did everybody get a copy of the letter and some background information regarding that letter?
Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I, I try to spell out in a logical fashion what, how, how the height requirement could be determined based on safety and standard practices for firefighter safety and that sort of thing. So using, using general geometry plus the requirements for safe ladder placement, I try to walk through what would be the, what would be the maximum, maximum height of a building that we were able to, to, to service with our, with our, our 35-foot ground ladder. Okay? Also included in there was also a bullet regarding flat roofs also, which has a different number associated with it. Because the, the standards and the practices for, for laddering a flat roof are a little different than laddering a building for, for a rescue purpose. And I don't want to get into the details unless anybody has a specific question in that area. But basically, I, I try to provide some rationale that, you know, from the point of view of firefight, firefighting for life safety and property preservation, they're the maximum, the maximum reach that we, we have are defined in the letter with our current ladder capabilities.
Great, I appreciate it. And I want to, I just want to check with Dale. Obviously, I think you've had a chance to review this too. Does this, would this, if this change were, were implemented, help you in enforcing and reviewing some of the billing permits that you do see?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I think I'm the one who initially started this. And my thought process behind this was, I just wanted to make sure we were treating everybody equally. When I get a, and it's actually 34, not 35 feet is what our reg is. But when I get that and I look at a permit deciding whether a permit is allowed or if it has to go to the ZBA, the issue was, where do we measure from? And it varies so much. And before I go too much farther, I'd like to say that the chief's calculations are all accurate and everything that he is trying to do makes complete sense. And I understand what he is trying to accomplish. That's all accurate. Having said that, when I'm looking at issuing a permit, do I start at the ground level on the high side, the mid, middle, down below? Depending on where access points are, and there's just so many things that go into it that there was no clarification. So I didn't really have, when I started this, a thought. I just wanted to know what it is you wanted me to enforce so everybody would be treating the same. That's how this all started. Um, I'll leave it at that for now unless you have any questions.
Okay, well, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak to that too as well. I was working with Chief Philchuck on this initially. And, and so I could see where Dale had some concerns where, because only in our zoning ordinance, as far as I know, was there anything that addressed building height, which just says maximum building height shall be 34 feet measured from grade? So I'm sure that was created for, for Mr. Sylvia. So now, what the chief has done in his, the details of description are really to say that measuring 12 feet out and to the lowest grade at, at any point in the house, meaning 360 degrees, 35 feet would be the maximum building height. So it definitely clarifies much, much more than what we've had.
This is Mr. Beal, but thanks to the chief. I, I love when we get something that makes sense so we understand where our regulations are coming from. And I thank Mr. Sylvia for putting on his comments on this as well. Question for the chief, is another concern being the, you know, what, like, what's the pumping capacity? Because we're obviously, we don't have pressurized hydrants in town. So, yeah, I looked up some numbers and, you know, I don't know what our pumpers are rated at, but 1,500 gallon per minute pumper, supposedly it can go, you know, only 600 gallons per minute at 20 feet high. So is that another concern with, with making sure our building heights are at a certain level?
Certainly, but our pumping capacity is well within, well, well within the 35-foot limit, that's for sure. Okay.
And I'm fine with keeping it 34 because I like to have a little bit of a margin of error for when there's a fire and you're putting a ladder down, you know.
Primary concern here was for accessibility, Mr. Beal. It was for accessibility, okay?
I do have another concern though, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Everything that's being proposed here makes sense. However, I do have a concern with the big picture, and I just want you to understand this. I, I really don't care what it is that you decide, just so I have something in black and white that I can enforce. If we do this, and especially based upon the previous conversation that we started this meeting with, which I would kind of like to come back to that at some point. But you guys, if, if this is all approved, you are going to see a dramatic, and I mean dramatic, increase in denials, as in over 80%. And that is what is a concern to me, is we have to balance safety, we have to balance life safety for firefighters. We have to balance the needs of people coming into the town and wanting to build houses. And I just want to make sure, and I, I honestly don't care which way you guys go, but I want to make sure you have a full picture. If we approve this, and I will give you an example. I just had a one and a half story Cape come to me that I approved this week. If you pass this, a one and a half story Cape house will not be built. It'll be denied. And we are going to flood the ZBA with, almost everything is just going to be denied.
And the difference.
And if you're okay with that, I'm fine with it. But those are the things that we need to look at.
And the difference here is the definition of the lowest point?
Yes, where do we start the measurement from? Now, as I said, everything that the chief was saying was accurate and makes complete sense. And he's, he's trying to protect his people and that's, I commend him for that. It's a balance of, do we go to the extreme safety versus, you know, something that is acceptable to everybody? And I've looked at the different towns, and I know the chief has looked at different towns and there's a range, it goes all over the place. There are towns that do it the way he's proposing. There are also towns that do a, a means, like an average between the high and the low point. There, there's a wide range of different things that we can go out there. If you do go to the extreme, I'm fine with that, but just know that almost everything is going to be denied.
Okay. Yeah, and we're, we're, just to make sure it's clear, I mean, this is the first time the planning board has seen this letter. So we're not making a decision, you know, we're just looking for input. And that, that goes with every. And that goes with everything that's being said tonight is really just looking for input. And you know, some of these details and whatnot will we go over in detail with, you know, with the chief and with yourself Dale or, you know, with with Bonnie. I mean, there's a few of these things that we're definitely going to need to follow up on, but there's no decisions that are being made this evening. There's just drafts.
And and this is really in light of that, if the planning board does make a decision, will there be a public hearing prior to that about?
Yes.
This is one of the items that does require a public hearing for change.
Yes, all of the zoning amendments, if we, if the planning board wants to move them forward, do have to be heard in a public hearing. Prior to them being, you know, on a ballot to be voted on. And that's really the process we're trying to go through right now. And I guess I can remember what those dates are. Cause I do want to wrap this up because we've got some other cases we would like to get to. We just
Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at the agenda. It's November 11th is the final drafts have to be completed by.
Okay. So then, yeah, it is on the agenda. Thanks. So we've got November 11th is the final drafts and that vote and sent to a hearing. That'll be the November 11th. December 19th is the first hearing for the zoning amendments. And if needed, there could be a second and final hearing, January 13th. And then that will be voted on and sent to the ballot. So that's the the process we're in.
Mr. Chair, could I have 30 more seconds?
You got it.
Thank you. I know fences is not a high priority, but I would ask that you guys consider that this year. And the reason why is there's absolutely nothing in our ordinance about fences. And this is also a safety issue, especially in regards with the road agents and plowing and line of sight. Right now, anybody that comes to me for a fence, I have absolutely zero authority to deny anything. And people can put fences right on their property line on, which I have no problem with on the sides and the back. But right on the roads, I literally have nothing in our ordinance that tells me where they can put it and how far back. And it is becoming a safety issue because it's not only fences, but people put stone walls into that category too. And it's becoming an issue for plowing, especially with everything we've got going on with private roads and how we're doing this and safety line of sight, putting fences on the corners. And I would just ask you guys to consider at least looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Yeah, we'll we'll talk a little bit more about that. Yeah, I know we were, we had received some information from you about the side concerns, whether it's offset from the property line. And we haven't had the discussion yet about the frontage and visibility and some of the safety issues.
The sides really aren't that important. It's the front that's the safety issue. Thank you.
Yep. So let's, let's just make sure, I want to wrap this, the, at least the joint meeting up here in the next couple of minutes. Does any board member, any other board member have any items they want to talk about in this joint meeting?
Can I just ask, when would you be discussing offline the issue of the height problem? How we measure the height of buildings?
So we will, let's see, November 11th. We'll have some, we'll have to do this in our next meeting.
Do you have a date for that?
October 28th.
October 28th.
7:00 PM.
Public.
Public.
Joanna, would you please send me a link to that so I remember?
Okay, I want to thank everybody for taking their time. I know this is an off night for some of you board members. I appreciate you coming and attending the planning board member and for Chief Phil Chuck and Dale Silver. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. And if there's any other things that linger past this and and just communicate to Joanna and she'll get word to myself and Ed Veal, the co-chair. And, you know, we'll make sure we have this on our list for discussion at the next meeting. Okay, I want to go into some of these public hearings. We've got three hearings. So I want to start in on those. First one. The first one is a conceptual for Tammy Di Francesco, the trustee Kubota Trust land use change to include camping and water cross recreational events three times per year. And an application site plan application, or at least some information was provided. And I guess I'd turn to the applicant to see if you could explain a little bit more in detail for this.
I can speak for Tammy. This is Scott Frango, San Antonio Land Consultants.
Yeah.
And Tammy as well is on here and she'll, she'll fill you in after I get get through my little presentation. I do have a, a plan that came from the GIS town, GIS here and that to kind of show you the land we're talking about. There's no, no design or anything on it, just some labels.
Yeah, please share that if you could.
Can you see it now? The aerial?
Yes.
So the property is 21214 Raymond Road, owned by Kubota Trust, which is Tammy. Currently it's Nottingham sand and gravel. She owns two parcels, one here where the curse is going around is her house. Her house is is right here. I'll zoom in a little bit. And then there's a garage and then the gravel pit on this other parcel. And this is the parcel she's, she's looking for a change of use on. It's tax map 69 lot 10, 63 acres. And the focus is really in the pond area for this change of use. As you may know, she's had a couple of events there, water crossing snowmobile events, one was a couple of weeks ago. And the way it's laid out during that event is there's a spectator area over here on this side of the pond. This is kind of the pit area where all the racers are parked and all the vehicles. And then the race starts here and it goes around the pond. And then over here, next to the garage is where the parking is. And then there's been some temporary overnight camping. And that's what she'd like to get approved for for three events next summer or next spring, summer and fall. So currently it's a gravel pit or remain a gravel pit, but she'd like to do these events as well as camping for three times next year. She got a temporary permit to do it this year. And she's just looking for a permanent change of use permit to host these events next year. Now I'll turn it over to Tammy. She can better explain the workings of the event and how it benefits the town and and everything in the area. Turn it over to you, Tammy. Bottom left corner is the mute. Unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, you're, you're, you're on.
Hi. So we did these events, like you said, last year, this last year. And we're hoping to get permitted to be able to do it every year. And we were hoping, we know this time we did it all in the summer. And we're hoping to do one in the, the spring, one in the summer and one in the fall. And with the camping to go with it as a dry camping for now, for what we're looking to change. And we're hoping that we can get everybody's count on that.
Okay.
I can't see. I'm still on his video. There I am.
And maybe could you just go through a little bit of the events that you did have? And, you know, what, what the turnout was and, you know, we, obviously there's been some feedback. A little bit, you know, some complaints on noise, some other things, you know, how did it go?
Well, so the first one, well, we'll just end with the last one. So the last one was probably the busiest one. I feel like that we had a lot more town residents that showed up at that. And coming to see it, they actually saw that it was a family event. It's a dying sport without a place to be able to practice, to be able to have the race happen. So by having it here in Nottingham, it was able to bring a lot of good things to the town. I know a lot of people don't like the noise. If they came and watched it, it actually doesn't sound so bad when you're watching it. And to see like the families and the races and their families watching their family race. And it brought a lot of opportunity to the lives paradise and told me that they got a lot of, you know, people in that had said good things about it. And everybody that had come in had said good things about it. Everybody was very respectful. We had two police officers here the last time. We had two ambulances here the last time and everybody had nothing but good things to say about it. They really enjoyed it. It gave them something to do. And it actually turned out to be really good. And we were able to provide $1,000 to the food pantry and we're able to provide $1,000 to the recreation department in Nottingham. So we hope to be able to still be able to provide things to different people that need it throughout the town.
Okay.
Mr. Veal, was there a count that was given? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. It's like how many, how many people attend the events? I know they said the last one was the most well attended.
Throughout the whole weekend. So it was hard because people got bracelets to come through the whole weekend. So it wasn't just the one day here or one day there. Some people came for, you know, just Saturday. Some people came Saturday and Sunday at one point. So there was probably a total of about 1,200 between the whole entire weekend. I don't know exactly how many people were here each individual day, but it was never enough to cause traffic. It was never enough to cause any problems. So it's kind of hard to say.
And as a point of clarification, is this an additional, proposes an additional use of the current operations? Or are the current operations is a gravel pit abandoned and then this would be the new use of the property?
We want to add it as an additional use for the three times per year. Again, not doing it all in the summertime, just spreading it out. So ones in the spring, ones in the fall and ones in the summer.
And the duration of those events are Friday through Sunday?
Correct.
Is there, what's the start time, end time kind of thing with
Coming in on Friday and they were practicing from two to four on Friday. Cause they have to practice to be able to get their snowmobiles running correctly. It starts from like nine o'clock, 9:30, 10 o'clock on Saturday, ends at six, never, and then same thing on Sunday. Cause they have to have the whole time to be able to make the whole series happen. I think Steve from Northeast Water Cross is also here. If you guys have any questions for him, he's the one that sets the whole event.
Are there board members with with questions now? Just to remember, this is a conceptual. So it's not a formal application just yet. So want to make sure that if there is some information or more information, which we will need, just going through all of the the times and things that are happening and planning and operations, what would happen? So we will need some more detail than current, but I'd like to turn it to the board members to see if there's any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question. We had heard talk about fireworks or, and I was wondering if there were anything other than racing, camping happening that that we haven't heard about.
We had fireworks the very first time and they lit them off for like six minutes over the water. But they have never had them again, the last two events. We didn't.
Thank you.
This is Buzz. My question is, were there complaints from other towns? And does that make this a regional problem?
I guess I'd have to turn, or we'd have to ask, you know, Nottingham police or fire if there were complaints from outside the community.
Application, we would have to take it, that would be part of a vote that we're supposed to do with with all plans now is is have a vote on whether or not we feel that's a regional impact.
I mean, we don't have, I mean, it's not an official application yet, but when that comes in, I would expect probably since it's really close to the, it's abutting the town of Raymond line that at least at the minimum, get input from Raymond and you know, that that's that regional impact.
Mr. Chairman, this is Susan. I don't have a map to look at because I'm just on the phone. But I know that the Patuckaway River goes under 156 and empties into that extensive wetlands, which abuts this property. And my concern was what protections would be made to protect the integrity of the river and of those wetlands with all of these people coming in and needing to use facilities and things like that.
Okay. Could the applicant address that if there's what's going on with the river that's there?
Sure. Hi, again, this is Scott from San Antonio Land Consultants. Where my cursor is, the Patuckaway River goes along here. It's to the west of the property. And anything that they're proposing, the spectators are over here. The only thing that comes over here occasionally is if there's an ambulance needed on that side of the river, I mean, a pond. And then there's an ambulance that sits over here. Every, all the activity is is well away from the river. As you may know, there's an access that comes in and there's a bridge that goes across the river. But all the activity for these events will be a ways away. And part of the application that will be submitted is wetland delineation and an existing conditions plan showing different things. And we'll be able to provide distances from that river.
Mr. Chairman, to piggyback off of Susan's comment, to go along with that, will the future application address any sort of containment systems? Obviously there's a pretty large open body of water where adjacent to a Patuckaway River. Patuckaway feeds into Lamprey, which is a drinking water source for many. I don't know what the systems are in place for. Obviously these sleds get swamped sometimes. And then you have oil, water, gas mixing to some degree. Is there a system in place or would that be covered in the future application?
Tammy, you're muted.
Sorry. There's a recovery boat that pulls them out as soon as they sink. They only have a one gallon gas tank. And when fishing game approves this whole thing before it even went anywhere else, fishing game had to approve it. So fishing game is well aware of the water crossing. It happens not only here, it happens in Epping, it happens in Northwood. So they have, they have a one gallon gas tank, which is less than a boat underwater. And as soon as they go into water, the whole thing seals up. Some of the snow was actually in for as far as oil goes, they even have vegetable oil in there. So it has not contaminated. I love my water. It's not contaminated at all. Believe me.
Thank you.
Mr. Veal, there's a couple, so that touches upon a couple of things. So fishing game grants a permit, but there's no indication that fishing game checks in or does anything with the other state boards that would, you would think would have a purview on something like this, which would be DES, this would fall DES, this would fall under probably a couple of areas, alteration of terrain, which you probably have a current permit for, for the gravel, gravel pit. And then the shoreline water quality protection area, which this area, looking at the map quickly on the DES website, this area is all within the designated river corridor, subject to the shoreline water quality protection act. So if we had an application before us, it's definitely something I would want to make sure that we get DES either input or approval if a permit's required. In looking at the, the, the drawing that's on the screen currently or the overview, I'm sure these, these lines are kind of placed, you know, is best to your knowledge as to where the lines are, but just looking at that, it looks like some of the existing operations are off the, the property. So I don't know where the operations end and become someone else's operations. Cause you could see the screen got, got scrolled over a bit, but up to the top of the screen, you could see an area that's been cleared. That's not on your property, which maybe that wasn't done by you. Maybe it was done by the landowner.
Oh yeah, that's, that's on my neighbor's property. I think he's actually on here as well. That's, that's Artie Jenks' property. I have nothing, we don't do anything back there.
It looks like the existing garage and then some of that pit area, you know, that some of that's all been cleared. Right. I'm sorry. So the, the area is pit area?
No, that's my houses behind that area. So it's all fields. It's all grass.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Below that.
So that's all grass too. That's a big field. If you, I have aerial view of it. If you guys want to see what it looks like, but that's all, that's all my, it's all my grass. It's part of my yard.
Okay. But how about below that, below the pit area to the right?
Yep. So that's my, that's my land too. And that was, we paid, yep, we took that out of current use. We paid the town a $9,000 current use kind of fee to take that out. We paid a, we had some of it selective cut and we paid a timber tax on that.
I'm talking about, so tax map 69 lot four that shows Arthur Jenks.
That has nothing to do with me. He's always had that access road there.
Okay. That's what I'm saying. So when you look at an aerial, you know, it's difficult because that, that looks like the same type of area that's been cleared out as the area next to it. So obviously when you're dealing with large acreage, sometimes lines get moved. So I just wanted to make sure that the gravel extraction that's currently existing is, is within the permitted area.
Yeah, we, we are able to, our permitted area is to that, to the, to the pink line. We're able to, we're able to dig to the, the property line over there.
Okay. And I think that application plan, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
So I am in contact with the DES as well. They're, they're aware of what's going on. So they're, they're in, they're in anticipation of doing our land, our change too. We're working with you and them.
Well, good. Yeah.
So in the back part of the land, Scott, can you show in the back part of the land, this part of the land, I'm, nope, the other side. Back here, I've been, I've been talking to USDA for the past probably eight months, considering putting that part into current use. I mean, to put it into conservation. And there's all conservation surrounding that as well. So we just haven't gotten to the total end of what we're going to do yet.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to open it up to any public, just letting you know that we do have a hand raised.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board before I turn it over to the?
I just have one question, just I guess a point of clarity. You said you were in contact with DS. Is that, so is there an active AOT permit for gravel operations? Is that where you currently operate at or you didn't meet that threshold?
Oh no, we've been an active gravel pit for years and we do a altering permit every, every five years and today at 2020 is our fifth year. So we've been doing this for a long time. So yeah.
You essentially have to re-up for that and then they'll be aware of this kind of combined use?
Yeah, they're aware of it now. My, so every five years, so the last one was in 2015, we did one in 2020 in May. And so since the one in May has been done, now this has been happening. So I'm, we've been talking to them back and forth about the change and use and add that in there as well.
Okay.
And currently your permit is good till 2025, correct for gravel?
Yes. And just so everybody knows.
This is Susan. I want to tag on our review by the Natural Heritage Bureau for plants and animals of interest in that area for their review.
What was that?
Natural heritage.
I think it was. I think it was done originally. But maybe not.
This is generally a requirement of AOT, but.
I think, I think we might've been grandfathered in from when this was first put into a, a gravel pit. Back before there was a lot of regulations and then since then the regulations were added to it. I'm new into taking over the whole gravel area. So excuse me if I don't know all the answers.
I know Scott was trying to.
The Natural Heritage Bureau would have been done for her renewal for the AOT permit.
Okay. Is there a question from the public?
I think Lee Weldy was just asking to speak.
Okay. If someone could unmute Lee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. You asked for about a butters. I live technically across the street from the pit. I am on the Nottingham Raymond line. I've attended every event. I've had a decibel meter present. I showed the officers who were on duty that not once did the, even on the shoreline area, did it exceed 98 decibels when the sleds were racing. New Hampshire state inspection for motorcycles allows 100 decibels on the street. So as far as noise, you shouldn't, you wouldn't have a problem. I heard fuel mentioned. Most of the races, as I've walked through the pits, run racing fuel, which is most of it is a synthetic based fuel. It's not a petroleum based fuel. And like Tammy said, it's a, most of them are sealed containers. So they don't lose the fuel into the into the pond. As far as recovery, you're not losing the fuel. It's, it's a, it's a sealed tank along with the oil. The biggest thing that they run into is basically the dirt that comes off the, the launch from when they come off the pond. So you're, you're not contaminating the pond. So I don't think you're really concerned about runoff where that's a seal. It's basically a self-contained pond with no runoff into the rivers. I personally have no issue with them with future use of this pond, using it for what, what they're using. I've been a resident of Raymond since 1977. I've been open to when, all the way back to when Pike was running up and down the road. When they're coming down the hill near my house with their engine brakes on, shaking the windows when they ran the drag lines at 4:30 in the morning. The limited use of the pit seats and what she's doing with it on the weekends. I've sat on my doorstep, which above the tree line, the highest decibels I've heard is 68 decibels off of my front lawn. So it's not, while it's noise, it's more white noise than it is anything else. And, 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 and whatever future use she's looking to use for, I, I'm looking, I would support it. But again, that, that road is used by a lot of trucks. And when they're coming down the hill, coming from Raymond heading into Nottingham, if you were standing on my, sitting in my yard, literally those engine breaks shake the, shake the house. I've been there for two, three days when they've been running the pond and all you hear is sounds like a drone going around and around. It's nowhere near as obnoxious as what's legally on the street. Between the bikes doing their cruises, like I said, New Hampshire state inspection allows a motorcycle, 100 decibels. And these, in these, in these sleds, most of them that are lucky on the property are hitting 98, not on the street. So you gotta be very careful about your noise, what you're looking at to enforce, because they're well below what's legal on the street.
Thank you, Ms. Weldy. I appreciate the comments. Is anyone else from the public attending that wants to speak or have questions?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Okay. My name is Grace LePointe and I live at 212 Raymond Road. And I will tell you that I live in the Potawatomi River condos. And there are four units in our condos and we found the three events disturbing this summer. The noise is very loud. We heard that, first of all, none of the butters were notified that these events were going to take place. From what I understood, with the day of the first practice, we were given free tickets on our, our doorstep basically to come over. The noise level, it goes for the whole weekend. And I know that Tammy said, talked about the hours, the, the practice is on Friday and it doesn't just go for two hours. It is for most of the day. It's really loud and the other speaker said something about the decibels, 98. And we also had a decibel meter and it was approximately that range. However, when he talks about the other decibels being, you know, over 100, that is for maybe motorcycles passing by or whatever. This is something that goes on the whole weekend and you know, it's not something that's just passing. If you look at decibel meters, they talk about that. Anything 100 or above, over 30 minutes is dangerous. That's a dangerous level. So again, the butters immediately in front of this land, those of us in the condos find this very disturbing. Again, we weren't notified and it was just put in place.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your, your input. One of the, this is specifically one of the reasons why we're, we're hearing it that this at the planning board. You know, we, we also at the planning board took exception to the way that this was allowed and through the board of selectmen. And that's why you're seeing it now in front of the planning board in which some more understanding, some more detail and some more controls can be discussed and put on the event. At least better understanding and also notification. So you know, the board of selectmen in the applicant, you know, did not apparently notify a butters, but in this process with the planning board, all the butters will be notified.
Um, we did note, we did the first one because it was last minute after we got the approval from fishing game. I will admit that we didn't get to, notify everybody, but we did notify everybody the last two. And I don't know, Grace, which unit do you live in? I'm not really sure.
I live in number three.
Are you a owner or you're a renter?
Actually, my daughter's the owner. And she's sitting next to me. She feels the same way.
So I guess, I guess, just let me jump in here because I'd rather not have applicant and, and public talking together, although I appreciate the, the sentiment. So just notifying the butter by a letter on their doorstep or just even a phone call is not official notification. So in order to have official notification, it, it basically has to be a, you know, certified. And that's what happens through the planning board process. And I, I know there's been, there was some advertising that was done via social media and such, and that is also not notification.
We did send out letters after the, the first one. We didn't send them certified. I didn't, I didn't realize that that needed to be done.
We didn't receive them, but the other thing is if it does get approved, is there something that could be done as far as for us, the big issue is not the traffic or it's the noise level. And I'm wondering if there's something that can be done to reduce the noise, for example, putting up high fences or whatever, just anything that can be done to reduce the noise level.
Yeah, we'll look to the application. You know, it's, it's nothing that they need to go through right now, but you know.
How do I raise my hand?
Please, please address that. I'm just talking to the applicant right now. If you could please just address that in your you know, site plan application of the, the noise. And if there is something that could be done with that.
There's another, there's another butter that wants to speak. He's trying to get.
Okay. Hey Steph or Joanna, could you please help with the muting and unmuting? So there's some that are, are spoken and are still unmuted, but we're getting some background noise. So if somebody has their hand raised, Steph, could you manage that, please?
We don't have a hand raised, but I think Arthur Jenks, did you, did you want to say something?
Yes, I would.
All right.
Hi, as you see on the tax map, I live directly behind Tammy. I stayed here the whole weekend and I had no problem getting in and out, traffic. The noises, yeah, I guess, you know, there's some noise to it, but it's just the people having a great time. I don't, what is, I don't get the issue. I, I I mean, it's just people hanging out and having a great time, enjoying the weekend.
Okay. Well, appreciate your, your comment. Anybody else have concerns or questions?
We have Sharon Weldy that is raising their hand.
Okay.
Okay. Can, I'm on a phone, so it's kind of tough. This is, this is Lee Weldy again. You, you talk about the noise and some of the issues. I, I, I would, I would guard against addressing that as the sole, one of the sole or, or looking at that as one of the issues. We also have Potawatomi in my backyard. We also have the fireworks. When you start talking about noise and enforcing it on a single property, you've got to be very careful. I know some of them, large fireworks that are lit off, off the park. They, they go up and they make a lot of noise. Some of your boats that are the jet boats and the boats that are on the lake and make a lot of noise. My point of bringing up the 100 decibels on the motorcycles, that is a New Hampshire state inspection allowed law. Doesn't mean that it's for two minutes, three minutes, five minutes. It's, it's, it's a whatever determination, however, along that motorcycle or, or vehicle runs. So when you're, you're looking at an area of property lines and noises, you might address what happened with Lee Speedway. They had, they were trying to enforce a noise ordinance and found that the vehicles going down the street were louder than the cars or the, or the, or the race cars on the track. It's a very vague ordinance that you try to enforce and, and it's not something that's really you're not really able to enforce because how do you tell a tractor trailer that's going down the road to hear?
All right. You're, you're cutting, you're cutting out. We can't quite hear you.
Putting the sleds on the, on the.
Mr. Weldy, Mr. Weldy, we we, we can't hear you. You're breaking out. Is that just me or is that just everybody that's hearing it? Okay. Could you, Steph, could you mute him? We can't, we get the point there about the, the noise. Steph, is there a way to mute him? Okay. Or Joanna, I don't know if you have control to be able to, as the host.
Mr. Chairman, it's a point of order. It's Mr. Veal.
Ed, you're muted. I don't know if you know that.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that better. Mr. Veal, just a point of order. In, in, I don't want to cut off discussion on this case or this conceptual at all. I want to make sure we get through it and give the applicant a fair, fair say. But I do want to be conscious that we have two other cases ahead of us tonight that are design reviews or site plan reviews. And I want to make sure we don't, we limit repeat discussion.
No, I know. I was trying to get to that, but the, Mr. Wealy or Wildy was cutting out and couldn't hear me. So I do want to move on and thank you, Ed, for, for time checking. This is a conceptual. We haven't seen the site plan application yet. So I know a lot more discussion will happen once we see that material. So if there's anything further from the applicant that you would like to present tonight, otherwise we'd just be looking for the site plan application in the near future.
I think we're good. Thank you for your time and all the input. I think the next time you see us, we'll have a site plan application and change of use.
Great. Thank you. All right, we are running a little long. I appreciate everybody staying on with us. Back to the agenda. The next case we have is case 20006 SPR. And this is a application from Devon Tyack requesting a site plan review for a horse boarding business with a future plan for training and riding lessons. The property is located at 108 Stage Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 43 lot 34, sub lot A. And Steph, could you just walk through the application and materials? And we got a review letter a little bit just prior to this, but.
Yes, so I did send out a review probably around 5:00, 5:30. So if you guys have the opportunity to check that, if you haven't, that would be great. So the history of the property is that it used to be in a horse boarding facility. And I believe there was also riding lessons that went along with that. When Ms. Tyack bought the property, it did not have an existing use of a horse boarding facility and got flagged by the zoning administrator, Dale, when they needed to rebuild the barn. The main point that I wanted to highlight is that no major changes or increase in use is going to occur on this property. She just wants to continue doing what it was done, what was done on the property in the past. In this case, it would be a reinstatement of the prior use. So she did not provide us with a full survey. In this case, I'm not sure it's necessary. I would encourage the board to have a discussion as far as what you think is necessary for this case specifically. And anything that is not needed can be waived. And I'm willing to work with the applicant to make sure all those waivers are met because it would be a lengthy list, but I can work with her on that.
Yeah, and we would, you know, first need to accept the application. And I think we probably won't at this point, just because there isn't enough information. And that would be including, you know, the waiver requests. And, you know, before, you know, talking with the rest of the board members, I think it would be very helpful if we did a site visit. And that way, things could at least be seen in the, in the field, so to speak. And given that, you know, there isn't an existing site plan, you know, maybe that visual context will help with, you know, not having the requirement to develop a full site plan. So that, that's my thinking at this moment.
Ms. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal, just a point of order on that. And maybe Ms. Caselac can answer this for us. And we have, what level of discussion can we have on this if we don't? So like on a subdivision application, we have to accept the application before we can get into details about it. And have further discussion before we can have a site walk. But with a site plan, can we have additional discussion before we act on the completeness of it?
That is a great question.
So I guess I'll throw one question out there that I don't know, it was considered in this and not knowing much from the application. So we mentioned that there's, there was an existing use here before that probably didn't have a site plan for it. I don't know if this, I don't know what level of business they're looking to do out of this, if it might qualify as a major home occupation. And if, and if so, if that would streamline the site plan process for them.
So I just wanted to point out that this is considered an agricultural use.
Yeah.
In the, technically in the agricultural district. So how, I mean, you guys can discuss that and interpret that as, I just want to make sure that was, that was understood.
You mean as opposed to a home occupation?
So horse, horse boarding, stable and such, that's an agricultural use in our, in our use ordinance.
According to the state statute, yeah. There's, the zoning ordinance does not specifically define what an agricultural use is. But referring back to the state statute.
If you go back to the state statute and then apply it to our zoning. So the permitted uses within the agricultural district is farming and related agricultural uses and home occupations. So that'd probably be the section that would apply.
Yeah, I would think that that.
Versus the Town Center District, because it sounds like it's in the, the rez ag district.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, primarily one of the reasons why we have both, resident and agricultural. I guess, so do we think we can accept the application as is without those waivers? Is that, is that your question? Ed?
Or do we need to do that before we can really have the mobile discussion that we need to have?
Well, I guess I'd leave it up to the board as well. I mean, if people feel that this application is complete enough to move into the review, then, you know, a motion can be made.
The chairman, are you soliciting comment?
Sure, Sue, please.
Um, my personal feeling is that this, this use on the property has not changed from what it was before until this new person bought it. So the property is the same with, with the exception of replacing the barn. So I would be comfortable with doing just a site visit rather than going through the formality of a complete application for something that's really not going to change a lot, just to rebuild a barn. Unless our regs require that we need to do that.
I don't think there's anything clear cut as that, that says that.
Kind of, Article 1 of the site plan, number 2, the following gives us two uses that are exempt from the requirement of a site plan review. One is a business use of residential property that meets but does not exceed the requirements of a home occupation minor. Two, a business owner or tenant intends to occupy an existing building or space where the new use is not a change of use as defined in Section 20. And the existing site plan meets the needs of the new owner or tenant. I think that's the issue here is there was, as far as we know, there is no site plan on, on file for that use.
Okay. And just to make it clear, we can't do a site visit until we have an accepted application.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I, I would like to entertain a motion that this application be accepted and that we can work with the applicant on, you know, making sure it's, has the information that we were going to need.
Mr. Chair, this is Susan. I move that we accept the application for case 20, I'm sorry, case number 20-006-SPR as complete.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second from Ian, thank you. Just do a roll call. If there's no other discussion, Ed Veal.
I still, I still have, I still have a, still unclear as to whether this is an application for a home occupation or not.
Well, it's an application for a site plan change of use. Right? Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Site plan approval.
Site plan approval. So it's not a home occupation, it's a site plan approval.
And in Steph's opinion, it's complete? Steph?
The, so the definition of complete is do you guys have enough information to consider the merits of the case? If the only thing that's, you know, you're questioning is the site walk, I think that's a, that's a complete case. You can always ask for more information later. But if you think that you, you don't understand the, the case itself with the information that you're given, then it should not be accepted, accepted as complete. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Do we accept this? Then I'll roll call Ed Veal.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Sue Mooney.
Yes.
Tyler Eaton.
Yes.
And Buzz Davies.
Yes.
And I'm yes, so that's unanimous. So this application is accepted. And I think before we really get into this, I think we'd be best off with scheduling a site visit.
I agree.
So we do have a, let's see, authorization to enter the property. And, but I would like to schedule with the owner a time to visit the site. And just looking to members, if there's a, a good time within the next, probably sometime next week. We could, we could do a, either a Saturday morning or sometime after, you know, 5 o'clock for, for those people that work until 5.
I would, Mr. Chairman, up for after 5 or thereabouts during the week.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to talk to Devon at all, bring her into this discussion?
Yeah, that's the applicant, sorry?
Yes.
Sure. Yes, please. Devon, if you, if you don't mind chiming in a little bit, we're planning to schedule a site walk. Just wanting to make sure that we can, we can do that. And what's convenient.
Yes, so I know you had said Saturday, but anytime in the evening, any day will be fine for me.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I know 5 o'clock was thrown around as a time possibly or 5:30. I know we're getting into the fall, so it gets dark pretty quickly. We like to do things on Wednesdays, it seems. So if next Wednesday, the 21st, you said within the next week, so I could capture that. Works.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds.
5:30, I think that would be still enough daytime for, for this site to see it.
We will have to provide notice.
Does that give us enough time for the notice? Joanna?
Yes, I think so, as long as I can put it up tomorrow.
Okay.
So if you want to motion, Ms. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion on it.
Yeah.
And we can have a discussion. Ms. Chairman, I propose that we hold a site walk on, for case 20006 SPR on Wednesday, October 21st at 5:30 PM.
Second.
I'll second.
Was that Gary?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Yeah, let me just check with Devon again. Is that okay with you? Time frame is 5:30 on Wednesday, the 21st?
Yes, that works fine for me.
Great. I'll just do a roll call vote. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Sue Mooney?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Buzz?
Yes.
Okay, and that's yes for me, so that's unanimous. So hopefully, we'll set that up. Joanna, if you get the notice out. And then whoever is able to go, if we do have a quorum, will have to take minutes.
And then second course of action on that, Ms. Chairman, is to continue the case. I don't know what our October 28th date looks like, Joanna. I think we have some cases continued already. Oh wait, we got the agenda, it's online.
Sorry, what did you say, Ed?
I was trying to see how busy October 28th is. Right now, it looks like we just have one case for 14 lots subdivision on that. And we probably have some zoning stuff.
Let's, let's do it, let's do it for the 28th. So if we can have a motion to continue to the 28th.
Ms. Chairman, I move that we continue case 20-006-SPR to Wednesday, October 28th at 7:00 PM.
I'll second.
You got it this time, Sue.
I did.
Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Roll call for Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Sue Mooney?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Buzz?
Yes.
And Dirk is yes. So we will continue this case to that time and date. And Devon, we will be out there at 5:30 on Wednesday.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much. To the, the next case, which is the last case. Again, we're running late today, but we'll get there. This next case is case 20008 SPR. This is an application from Nancy Phantom and Hugh Davis of Northwood Veterinary Hospital LLC requesting a site plan review for a temporary change of use to rent the property for four months. The property is located at 255 Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham and is identified as tax map 16 lot 7. We have some materials on this. As we understand it, there's Northwood Veterinary Hospital. Northwood Veterinary Hospital is needing to renovate their current location and needs a place to do their business for, you know, about four months and has found a parcel and property and building in Nottingham that might serve them. Steph, if you have any other details. So
Um, yeah, so this is, you know, a change of use. Even though this is a temporary situation for Northwood Vets, they, it would, the site itself would need to be changed back after their use if it's going to be used for something else in the future. That was the only thing that I really wanted to highlight. Yeah, I think I have more than people.
Okay, thank you. And I know we, we did see this application, the site plan in 2017. We did review the site plan and yeah, it was, it was a car use, garage use at that point. So the, the use is not changing. They did submit a site plan sketch, basically on top of the previously submitted site plan, utilizing the same parking area. No expansion of the building. Yes, I'd like to hear from the applicant or yeah, just to hear a little bit more about, you know, what, what the plan is.
Hear me now?
Yes.
There. Hi, I'm Nancy. Thank you for hearing the case. Um, so yes, we have just basically outgrown our space and need to renovate. So we have been asked to vacate the premises. We'll really probably only need to operate for approximately six weeks. The lease now will actually be December 1st to February 28th, not, not November 1st. The hospital will probably only need to actually function there for, for approximately six weeks. It's, we just built in some extra time to be able to move in and move out. And we all know how construction things go, so it might not be precisely four weeks to the day. So there would be no fundamental changes to the building. Staff parking would be in back, client parking would be in front. We are still observing a COVID protocol where clients are, stay in their car and call us and then one of the technicians goes out and gets the animal. So actually, clients would not be in the building for anything other than euthanasia. So clients would remain in their car. Traffic pattern would be in a one-way circle around the building. Entrance and exits would be onto the road that is there, not, not Route 4. There's outside lighting already, would make sure that was adequate. Obviously, provide plowing and all those items. Waste disposal, we use Waste Management Company now. All medical waste is handled by a medical waste company. So it, it should be relatively noneventful for the town of Nottingham, although we appreciate being able to visit for a little while. And, and so hopefully we can come in and do a little business and then go back out. And I have spoken to the landlord. We would obviously be open to having fire and building inspections, you know, have them come through, make sure they were happy with everything. And so we would probably be actually operating for, they're thinking of breaking ground like the first week of December, provided everything goes smoothly. So I would think, you know, the bulk of the business would be the month of December and, and January.
Could you explain sort of what, what that would be? Is it, is it your whole operation moving there? Is it kind of kennels? Is it storage? Is it everything? You know, what are you going to do?
Kind of everything, but we do not do any boarding. So there is no dog boarding, so the only overnight animals would be patients. And they are usually either recovering from surgery or ill, so there's no, no noise really. We'll be altering some of our protocols. Like right now, we usually keep spays and neuters overnight. I think because we'll be in a different facility, we won't be keeping them overnight. So it would only be more like orthopedic procedures or, or things like that that really do require another 24 hours of rest. We have really no retail, other than, you know, people picking up medication or prescription foods. So it's not like people are popping in to, to shop or, you know, anything like that. So it is your typical veterinary visits, you know, wellness visits, ill visits, and then surgery practice. We do not have emergency services. If, if we have an after-hours emergency, those are sent to local emergency rooms, Portsmouth, Concord, Redwood. So our hours of operation are seven in the morning till 6:00 PM on Mondays and Fridays till seven on Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, and eight to one on Saturdays.
Thank you for that description. I guess we have to do a similar thing. We do have to accept the application. I do want to ask Steph same thing. I mean, are we looking at basically a change of use? And that, you know, Dale will be needing to, or code enforcement will need to follow up as far as, you know, going in and, and as you say, making sure the setup is adequate. You know, just those details of, you know, medical supplies are secure, prescriptions, drugs secure, and all of those kind of things.
Yeah, all controlled substances are in a lockbox. And we have a security system that runs off the cloud, and so we're seeing if we can get that moved over as well.
Do you have a question? And this might be for Joanna, and we might need to follow up on it. This was last approved in 2017, I think. Do we know that all of those conditions were met? I know there was a question a few months ago that maybe not all those conditions of that site plan approval were, were met. Does that ring a bell?
I'd have to look into it. The only one that I'm not sure if it was met was the berm. I think there was a, a mention of a berm being required, if I'm remembering the right case. I can look into this, so.
Yeah. Steph, go ahead.
Um, I did, I did talk to Jen about this, and she said that this would supersede anything prior.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my question too, because yeah, I remember that case had lots of conditions with paving and lining and lighting and screening of the neighbors, like fencing and cleanup of the site and such. So that's great if, if this one is kind of a standalone and supersedes.
Yep. Yeah, and Steph, you mentioned also that this, there would be another change of use required after the veterinary clinic leaves, correct?
Would that be for any use? Because they're asking for a temporary conditional use, so I don't know if that's something we have the purview to do. And if it is.
Does it just revert back to the previous?
Does it revert back, or does it just, or is there no approved use of that property at that point, except for when it falls into the district?
Did you say this would be a conditional use?
Oh, change of use.
Just change of use, yeah. Change of use, even though their purpose is temporary, the site itself would change its use in full. So, you know, the property owner would need to come back to get any other business in there and change that use again.
And the property, I don't know if this makes any difference, but the property is for sale.
Are you willing to change your name to Nottingham Veterinary? Maybe stay there permanent?
It looks like she's basically just barely getting as close she can to the Northwood line there, right?
I called Linda at the Northwood Planning Board to put the plans in for the renovation, and I said, you know, what about that empty building? And she's like, well, and I'm thinking, oh, no, she's like, not my problem, it's in Nottingham.
Well, we, we, we would like, we encourage businesses on Route 4 specifically, and it's just, you know, it's our primary commercial area for this town.
I guess before we get too far along, do you want, would you take a motion on to accept the application as complete? Yeah.
Yes, please.
Nods, I'll, I'll take it. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Veal? I move that we accept the application, the site plan application for case 20-008-SPR as complete.
Second.
Motion second by Ian, any discussion? I'll just do a quick roll call vote. Ed, Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Buzz Davies?
Yes.
And Dirk is yes, so that's unanimous. So what we have in the application is a letter stating the, the purpose and the need and the duration, the hours, I think are written in this, yep. The amount of people, three full-time doctors, 19 other staff members, 10 or 12 of those are at the building at one site, one time. There's parking in the rear of the building. There is parking in the front, as the applicant noted. Are there other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we talked about the owner coming back to us to revert the use back. My, I guess my question is, if we have, if we were to put a time limit on this application or on this possible approval, would that put that in a place where it would automatically revert back? I'm just curious about that.
Well, no, I mean, there are allowed uses. I mean, this is, Steph, this is my understanding is that, you know, there are allowed uses that could be in that property. It's just the specific automobile garage required of the site plan application and approval. Now, it would not revert back to that. But it would, you know, another use could be used in it.
And it could be procedurally, that, that pre-existing, that use that had, had occurred there before is probably within the timeframe now that it's been abandoned as that use for so long, that I don't know if that, that use goes away. You know, I don't know if it's a period of four years or whatever, so procedurally with, with this, since it's a temporary situation, you know, if we're looking at, if we approve it and it's, the applicant's asking, really, it's, you know, a temporary state, so some of the requirements we might place on something that was going to be there permanently would, you know, wouldn't really apply. So how do we capture that so that we're not overly burdening this applicant for a temporary situation? But we're not unduly just authorizing something to occur in that spot afterwards that we didn't intend for? Can we, can we condition it that, you know, it's a period of six months? And then if it goes on longer than that, they'll have to reapply for a site plan to address, you know, lighting, parking, you know, screening, all those kind of issues?
Well, they did, and we did approve it with conditions. Right? We just don't know that those conditions are, we haven't confirmed that those conditions have been met. But I think that that should be outside this application for just a change of use.
I agree with that.
No, I, I agree, but I'm saying if we're approving, if, if this gets approved as a change of use, that this becomes the use of that property. So but I think, is it a six-month use, or do we have to, is it approved, it's approved?
Oh, I think we approve with a six-month use.
I don't think we have that option. It's not in our zoning.
As far as a veterinary clinic or?
As far as time.
Time?
If we change the use, we change the use.
Okay. Well, yeah, but it would be using this property as is, and any, you know, if there's alterations, if, if they do want to add, open up a, a whole new branch and want to add a lot of things, yeah, I'm pushing it. If, if, you know, if they want to do that and have, you know, more improvements, then it would become, you know, a new site plan application. So I guess the consensus is that, once it's a veterinary clinic, it's, it's going to be a veterinary clinic until it, the use, until it changes to something else.
That's my opinion.
Okay. I'm not opposed to that either.
I'm not opposed to it, but what I was saying is, when you get a permanent situation involved versus a temporary one, you know, there might, if this was to be a permanent business there, there might be some additional requirements we would, we would look at as a board, you know, possibly paving arrows, you know, checking with the, the, you know, traffic counts, whatever. Screening for the, the abutters, because I know the abutters were concerned about some of the debris and stuff coming onto their property from, from this property on the prior application. And, and things of that nature, that for a temporary situation, wouldn't really make sense to impose on this applicant. So is there a way for us to do both? Like where we possibly approve it and then in the approval state that the use will occur for no longer than six months? And if it does, then they'll have to apply for a new site plan to review, you know, additional concerns.
Yeah, I'm sure we could put that as a condition of the change of use. I mean, we're allowed to condition these approvals.
I would support adding it as a conditional use, as long as we state our intent. Can't really question it in the future, yes.
Okay. Any discussion on any other items? So I guess would we provide a change of use plan conditioned that after, say, six months? A new, a new change of use, or I guess I'm trying to figure out what, what a motion would.
I don't know, why, why I look up that, Mr. Chairman, did you want to see if, open it up for public, in case there's any?
Thank you. Yeah, we do have to hold a public hearing on this, and I'll just open up the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak to, for, against this application, which is the change of use. If you could indicate either by raising your hand, waving to your computer, or trying to get our attention. Hi Bonnie, you have to unmute yourself.
I have
Okay.
an issue to raise. And that is, it seems to me that people who have to come before my board to do, do anything in the commercial zone, is that not true?
I don't, I don't think so, I'm not.
You don't think so? I mean, there are certain uses that are permitted. But we get a lot of people who want to do this or that. We don't have a very big But we get a lot of people who want to do this or that. We don't have a very big commercial zone. I would just ask for a review of the ordinance to make sure you have the authority to change the use. Number one, and number two, that other business that was in there was an automotive business?
Yes.
Hey, hey, be quiet. Shh. Bad dogs. Hey, hey, hey. Sorry. If they're, if they're there by variance or special exception, you can't distinguish, you can't extinguish that. Only time and abandonment can extinguish it. Two years of it not being used. But that doesn't mean that you can't, somebody else can't do something in there. But I own a property in Lee that has two or three variances on it and a special exception. And they were there all at once. It doesn't mean it was being used for all those different things at once. There's a difference between the site planner view. I think the coyotes are, they're big in the neighborhood and Zinnia can hear them. Quiet, quiet. Anyway, sorry. I didn't want to throw a monkey wrench in your process, but I didn't, I didn't bring the ordinance up fast enough to look it up.
Yeah, I think you're referring, I think Bonnie's referring to the commercial industrial zone and the zoning ordinance gives, uh, seven or eight permitted uses. So I think we'd have to determine first, she brings up a great point, as a board, whether the proposed use is considered.
One of those.
Oh, permitted uses.
I mean, if there's a professional use, then certainly it would be.
I saw office space as a use.
Professional office.
Uh, service facility, including eating and lodging, retail wholesale establishment, mortuary, which this is, can be an animal mortuary at times, I imagine, but, uh.
I mean, I'm only saying that because I see cases come before my board asking to do this or that in that zone. And I'm like, and, and I know you can't, you can't, I don't believe you have the authority to extinguish a previously granted variance or special exception. In fact, they used to run with the land forever. But now the legislature passed a law that has them expired if they're, if the use is abandoned for two years.
Yes, I don't recall that, and again, this is, you know, three years back, is that a special exception was provided for that use, for the use of that garage.
I think it was an increase, it was an increase of the, the, of the use that was there currently. Because it had been an auto sales place prior to that with a garage, apparent, I believe, this memory. And the, I believe the case was that they wanted to do, you know, increased auto sales as well as, you know, service, um, garage for working on the cars there. So I think it was an increase of the current use.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think you're right. I think it was, it was auto sales and then they wanted to do maintenance.
I believe that has been abandoned.
They also did sales.
Yes.
They just expanded. But how did they get, how did they get permission to do the auto sales? You're saying that retail space is allowed, so probably it was under the ordinance. If they don't predate the ordinance.
And I think it was an existing use of the property. They're gonna, another person that was selling cars there, I think it was antique cars, but there were car sales there before. But going back to, so, but going back to this case, I guess that's something the board would have to make a determination on, Ms. Chairman, is is this one of the permitted uses in our commercial industrial zone? And if not, then it would go to the ZBA for a possibly special exception.
I, I would think that this, you know, this would be a professional office. I mean, that's, they've got clients and, you know.
It's medical.
It's medical, it's.
Medical.
Mortuary potential.
Yeah. I agree with that.
So it, it meets a couple of those. I mean, it, I mean, not even, you know, in all seriousness, I mean, this is, you know, it's a, this is a very synergistic type of use for that area. So I guess the board feels comfortable. Is it comfortable enough for someone to make a motion?
Now, Mr. Chairman, wonder if there are any more public?
Oh, is that what I was in the middle of? Yes, sorry. Uh, did anybody raise their hand? Joanna or Steph?
Coyotes, that's what she heard.
Okay, seeing no, no other public, I'll close the public hearing.
I just want to go back to my, I'm sorry to dwell on this, Mr. Veal, before I make a motion for it. I don't want to unduly burden an applicant that's just trying to get a temporary use for moving while they are getting stuff done on their, their current building, um, especially when the use seems like it does fit. But if this was going to be a permanent use, there's things I would like to see, you know, uh, condition this with, with some improvements on the lot. Uh, so I guess I can capture that by saying that if it extends beyond six months and then I can add some conditions that, you know, that the driveway be paved, but your spaces be lined, um, and, you know, directional use, I'm trying to go off what was on the prior conditional approval and, uh.
Why couldn't, Ed, why, why couldn't we enforce the current conditions? I mean, we can do that right now.
The current conditions that were on the prior plan?
Yeah, I mean, if they didn't meet the conditions, then they shouldn't have occupied. And, you know, they were never met, but the, you know, the landowner is obligated by that to provide those.
Right, but if that expires, which it sounds like it probably did, because I think, I don't even know if they ever, if they ever went into that space. So that, that site plan or that prior one was probably, if the two-year statute is correct, then that's probably expired anyway. So that means the conditions would expire.
Okay. I just don't want to have a whole bunch of conditions that, you know, between the parking and the lighting and the, and then something gets missed. I mean, I'd rather have it that, that we, you know, have an updated plan after six, after six months.
Yes, if we could do that, I agree. But like I said, I don't want, you know, north of this applicant to go in there temporarily, but we've approved it as a use, you know, they leave, their competitor, you know, Southwood Veterinary Hospital pops in and can start operating, you know, with current can exit conditions because it's an approved use.
So, so it wouldn't the, uh, six-month condition automatically, um, make it so the, the new tenant or owner would have to come before us for their new conditions, new, new approval?
That's what I was trying to find out, if, if we can do a six-month approval.
Why don't you, I mean, probably not. I mean, the use is, like you said, the use can expire, we're going to approve that use and it, the temporary might not be. You know, we might not be able to enforce that temporary.
Would you say that if it goes on longer than six months, that it would require a full site plan review?
Thoughts on that stuff?
That is something I'm going to have to look into and get back to you on. I, I cannot give you a confident answer on that at the moment.
Well, why couldn't we put the change of use conditioned on this specific user?
Because I don't think it's, I don't think we can legally do that. I think it's, I think it runs with the property.
Or could we condition that once this user vacates? That, I guess it's the same thing as a timeframe.
Can it, Steph, can an applicant, um, basically give up their change of use? So say, say the applicant does something or gives us something in writing that says, you know, as part of the approval, I agree to, um, rescind my change of use after six months. I don't know if we could do that, if that's kind of considered inappropriate. I'm not trying to make it more difficult than it is, you know, but again, when you, if change of use runs with the land and it runs perpetuity unless abandoned, then I just want to protect the town, you know, going forward, not trying to unduly burden this applicant. And that's what I'm trying to be cautious of, is that we do something that's works for the applicant and just protects the town.
Yep, um, can you give me like fifteen minutes to look into it? Um.
Well, what, I mean, what, what's, let me just ask the applicant, if, if we continue this to two weeks, is that a doable situation? Um, or, or is this something that's needed?
A little bit of a time crunch, because if I don't get this, then I have to do instruction trailers, um, which require ordering them. Um, so I mean, if we feel like it's just a matter of figuring out kind of the technicality of how to word it, but we're pretty sure we're down the hike, then that's fine.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter, we, go ahead, Bonnie.
All right, um, since I sort of threw a monkey wrench in to the deal without reviewing the ordinance, I feel kind of bad. I do believe that my statement about that, that the use runs for two years after abandoned, I mean, that's the permission, only applies to variances and special exceptions. This is a permitted in the ordinance. So I don't think that obtains in this case. I don't think you have to worry about that. You know what I'm saying? It's not, you're not granting them the use. They have the right to, to use it in that way under the ordinance. You just have the purview over their site review, I believe. Does that make sense?
Well, you know, that, I guess, when, when I do take a step back, if we're saying that this is a permitted use, then.
It's a permitted use, it's in the.
Right, why?
Professional office space, that's what it is.
Why do we need to vote on a change of use if it's a permitted use?
We don't need to, in my opinion, but you can tell me to shut up. This is not my board. I, I was only here for the first part of it. But that's my understanding. That's all I'm trying to.
No, it's a very good point.
I wonder, that assumption, we're essentially just reviewing it for this site layout for this particular user.
Right, and you probably, you probably can say, we'll approve this until such and such a date. I mean, I don't know, I've, I've never been on a planning board. You're not granting them permission for the use. It's, it's in the ordinance. It's already taken out of your hands. You're just, you're just looking at the safety and so forth issues of their site to make sure that it'll work for a few months, whatever they want.
And then every new business have to have their site review?
Well, the change of use would be, you know, go before, uh, at least the zoning administrator or, I'm sorry, the code enforcement. And so I, I'm just wondering if that's, I'm curious on if that's where this kind of came from, was from zoning, sorry, from Dale, um, and not approving something or not allowing something, you know, he wanted the planning board, or was this?
Well, it's still a change of use, by the definition of that in the site plan. So site plan regulations, change of use is defined as the replacement of an existing use by a new use, but not including a change of ownership, tenancy or management where the previous nature of the use, line of business or other function is substantially unchanged. So that's why I think this is pushing it into the site plan authority.
Right.
Because it's a change of, change of use, so, um.
But it's the site plan you're approving, not the use.
Go ahead, Steph.
Yeah, so I looked into it. You can put an expiration on the use. If the notice of decision just needs to be very explicit with the provisions that are waived in that case. So I think six months, I mean, does that sound reasonable or make it eight months?
Well, they have, they have it here for.
Oh dear God, I, it can't be six. I'll have no staff if it's six. Your builders will be in big trouble if it's six months.
We just want to make sure we give you enough buffers. You don't have to go through this again, you know.
Thank you.
We're in pretty unique times with, with stuff, you know, delaying projects, so. We're not wishing it upon you at all. We just want to make sure we give you enough time with contingencies to get it done without having to do this again.
So that it's a change of use from a specific use that the garage mechanical to professional office or, or that's used as a veterinary for a period of six months.
It would be, it would be less of a change of use for six months and rather a change of use and after six months, if they're still using it, it, the site plan needs to be amended, um, to account for a more permanent situation.
We can make a motion saying that kind of language right there, that site plan would have to be amended if continues out over six months?
Yes.
Okay, so Ms. Chairman, Mr. Veal, I move that we approve case two zero dash zero zero eight dash SPR for a change of use, um, with the condition that, uh, a new site plan would need to be submitted if the use is to occur beyond six months from, uh, December first to twenty twenty.
I'll second that too.
Any other? Discussion from the board? Okay, great. I'm glad we got to that point. Um, so I'll just roll call for votes. Ed Veal?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Susan Mooney?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton? Buzz Davies?
Yes.
All right. Dirk is yes. If Tyler is now sleeping or just on mute, we'll, uh, have him abstain.
Well, I think the applicant, it, it seems like a simple thing sometimes, but, uh, we don't see a lot of them, so sometimes we get. Appreciate your patience.
Yeah, so you are approved.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
What, what was the date that it expires on?
Six months from December first.
Okay, thank you.
I can't do the math tonight.
It's too late for that.
Yeah, because they.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be sure, so that, the applicant, um, you said December first is the date that you were looking at, correct?
Thank you. I just wanted to verify from the notice.
Yep.
Can you guys hear me? This is Tyler.
Now we can.
Okay, I guess I had to press star six. I had to get on my, my internet went down, so I'm on my phone.
Okay.
Yes, I, I would be, yes.
All right, we'll count you in. Thanks, thanks for your effort in getting back into the meeting. All right, thank you, uh.
So all I need to do is just call and have like the, um, fire and safety guys come out?
I think so.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good day.
Yep, thank you. That's the end of our caseload. We just go around and see if there's some, uh, some updates or some information. Let me start with Ed.
No, sir.
Gary?
Uh, just that the second, uh, recycling roundtable on the twenty-second coming up and to just put it out there, anybody that wants to be, be involved in that, um, uh, said that's very possible and encouraged. I'd love to see somebody also maybe from, um, our recycling area or, you know, in, in one of the, from one of the, um, departments. So we'll see. Hopefully somebody else, uh, would like to do that.
Tyler, do you have anything updates or anything you knew?
At the select board meeting, uh, we, uh, talked about, again, about the Route Four property. You know, we're getting the, the brokers are out there, um, or, or. Or things have been distributed to real estate brokers, the appraisers, we're looking at the property and do two different scenarios. And we also hired a new part-time police officer. And the majority of our meeting was a conversation court on, from rec on, you know, like a wishlist. That was about it.
Thank you. Ian? Susan?
Monday on the 19th, the commission will be entertaining a representative, the Kyle Road subdivision application. And I'll, we'll get a report through the planning board on how that went.
Ms. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I just want to jump in for a sec. If, then, I mean, cut you off. Did you have anything else before I jump in?
You already did.
No, no, I'm done.
I know. I just, something Mr. Eaton mentioned about the, the part-time police officer. I don't know if anybody in town noticed that our longtime police chief, Gunnar Foss, is retiring, I believe, on January 1st. So he's been a really big service to the, the town. Every interaction I've ever had with him was utmost professional and friendly. So big thank you to the chief for all his service, and I wish him a healthy, long retirement.
You're here.
Yep, he'll be missed for sure.
Yeah, fully agree. Buzz, do you have anything?
I'm all set.
Joanna?
I didn't put the minutes on the agenda, but I do have several minutes I sent to y'all and got feedback on, so that would be something to consider approving. And I sent the case for, or the material for the design review to you all ahead of time, so hopefully I won't have to send out another mailer for the next meeting. I think that's it for now.
Okay, Steph?
Nothing for me.
Okay. I don't have anything either. So any other public comments? Anybody else have anything to share?
No, just, it's Mr. Veal, just that we may be update the agenda for October 28th to include the continued case from tonight and then continued discussion on the zoning changes. Because we want to hammer those out, because our final draft will be needed for the meeting after that.
Right.
Other than that, I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Yeah, you want to push the minutes to next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion to adjourn, any seconds?
Second.
Thanks for sticking with us. It's a long one, but we got a lot done. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everybody.